And if we could just have a moment of silence for the wildfires in Australia and for all of the people, the homes, the properties, the animals. That's absolutely terrible. And also, let's pray for what is happening in the world today with Iran. I don't even know what to say. We just hope peace can be reached and very few lives can be lost. And that's also a little bit of quiet. Please be seated. And may we please have the roll call.
Councilmember Hayes.
Here.
Councilmember Olson.
Here.
Mayor Procham-Caskey.
Here.
Mayor Marshall.
Well, we have no presentations.
It's going, wait a minute. Sorry, did you ask me a question?
No, I just looked at you. Are there any announcements or written communications?
I have no written communications and the announcements would be, I left all my notes at my desk, however, on the city website, we have a whole link dedicated to all the election information and it's in English and Spanish. And it has deadlines as far as when to vote or when to reach out for your absentee ballot, things like that. And we are still waiting for notification from the county as to where the voting places are going to be and how many days are going to be open because they are, you'll be able to vote more than one day.
All right, awesome. And I don't know if this is when it comes into that, but we did send a letter regarding the Vons exemption for recycling. We got it out yesterday. So, so thank you very much, staff.
And that's also on the website.
Okay, thank you.
Could I just ask exactly what that meant, just for the publics?
Just there was a time period that you could voice your concerns and say that you don't want to give them an exemption. And so we did, we wrote a letter as from not just the mayor and the council, but representing the community that we were against the exemption and stated our reasons why. Number one, that we are on an island and we have no other place to take our C R Vs. So we were asking not to give them the exemption.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Department head reports.
Good evening. Bob Greenlaw, Director of Public Works, two items tonight to report out. Beverly Beach Road, we got Public Works crews that are repairing the sinkholes that occurred during the last couple storms and we should be finished up with those by the next week. Shouldn't have any closure of the road pertaining to that, though. And then also another reminder for the public that we have Parking Survey number three, there's a link on our homepage that brings you to that. There's 13 questions and that is relative to the parking changes we made in the 200 blocks of Catalina Avenue and a 300 block of Beacon. So please get on there and provide your input. Any questions?
No, council? You're good?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, council. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year to you.
Here we go. Just a few things. Obviously, we've, Christmas came in like a, like a banshee in the storms. New Year's after our memorial service for Tim Mitchell. Everything, the wind came up, seas came up, but everything was off the piers, so nothing really ended up having an issue. One thing I did want to point out is that we've, thanks to Mike Palmer and Jordan Monroe, we've got our harbor survey up on the website. So you can go to the website, click on it, and anybody out there that would like to take the survey that has a boat, feel free. We've sent the email site or the login site to the Log Newspaper and to several yacht clubs throughout Southern California. So we're, we're moving forward with it. We have it up tentatively till the end of April and then we'll, if we need to extend it, we have no problem extending it, so.
Is this something you've done before? The harbor's done before?
We've done it a long time ago. I mean, 20 years ago, maybe. And it was mostly for the dinghy docks. I remember the dinghy docks was a big issue and, or still are. And they did it. But this is a well-rounded fact-finding mission. It has to do with services in the harbor, services on, close to the harbor, on Front Street, has to do with, you know, how we interact with the people, how the people complaints they have. And so for this, we will, you know, we'll get it, we'll read it, and we will grow with it. But it's been a long time since we've had the survey out, so.
Right. And you are contacting, are you, are you just, this is the only way you're getting the word, how you're getting the word out, JJ?
We're, we're getting the word out through Log, the Log Newspaper. It's on our website. We've sent it to all the different, quite a few of the different yacht clubs throughout Southern California, from San Diego up to Santa Barbara.
Okay.
And so hopefully it will. It's only about, I think, 15 or 16 questions, but, you know, they, they get to the heart of it. So I want to take the opportunity to thank Michael Palmer and Jordan for helping us getting that out on the internet, so.
Great, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Have we sent a postcard to the mooring owners and sub leases?
I'm sorry, say again?
A postcard to the mooring owners to let them know about the survey that's out there?
We plan to put it on their email to all the mooring owners and to the leases.
Okay.
So, which, I mean, we're trying to get it out there to everybody, so it, it doesn't do any good not to get the full bang for your buck.
Right. Thank you for that.
Thank you very much, JJ. Personally, I want to thank you for that.
That survey was not a direct, I'm sorry, Cindy, the survey was not a formal direction from council, but it was a suggestion.
Yeah, great one.
It's taken a while, but we did it.
That's okay, good.
Really great.
Good evening, mayor, council, city staff, Mike Krug, Avalon Fire Chief. I just want to quickly recognize a couple of my firefighters, our firefighters. First, James Buddy. He recent, hold it up. He recently completed his fire academy out at Crafton Hills College, which is out in San Bernardino. And he was recognized as the top academic recruit. So he graduated with the highest class average of his entire recruit class. That's a huge accomplishment.
That's awesome.
And it's a, it was a full-time academy, about 300 contact hours, and he left that not only with all his certificates, but with the highest class average of all his recruit class. Christian Cisneros completed, completed his probation. The end of his probation included him going to Texas for about three and a half weeks, and that was at Texas A&amp;M University. They run a terrific blended academy where he did the bulk of his online curriculum remotely here while he was in Avalon on the job. And then when he went to Texas, they do all the hands-on skills-type portions. Christian was selected as class valedictorian for his recruit class at Texas A&amp;M University.
Yeah.
Wow.
Huge compliments for both those individuals and we're super proud of them.
Yes.
That's really great.
And both Avalon High School graduates, correct?
Both Avalon High School graduates, correct. Lastly, it's been terrific. We've got a great, great start for the rain this winter and there's a lot of vegetation growth already. So it's never too early to start thinking about what we're going to do come springtime with weetabaitment and brush clearance when all that grass and vegetation starts to dry out.
Yeah.
Unless anyone has questions for me, that's all I have.
Counsel? No? Thank you very much, Jay.
Thank you very much.
Glad I snapped that photo when I did.
Did you get a good?
I got a good one, yeah.
Good evening, mayor and city council members. John Hawking, Captain, L.A. County Sheriff's Department. I brought our new detective over, Liz Molina, and I'd like to introduce her to everybody and have her say a little something about herself. She's been the, been at Avalon Station for a short period of time, but she's done an outstanding job. So this is Liz Molina.
Great.
Hello, everyone. I've been a detective for just shy of 15 years and total time in law enforcement, 24 years. And I really look forward to working for the city of Avalon and its residents. Thank you.
Well, we welcome you here, Liz.
Welcome.
Thank you very much.
All righty.
And does anybody have any questions for me?
No? No, we're good, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Matt Baker, Finance Director. Just wanted to remind everyone out there that business licenses are due January 15th. We've mailed out approximately 1,300 licenses and it's been a couple of weeks, so if you haven't received your business license in the mail, please come to City Hall and talk to someone in the Finance Department and we can get that sorted out. But we believe all of them have been mailed. And just also a reminder, dog licenses are up for renewal at the beginning of the year, so if you do have a dog or if you have a friend that has a dog, please remind them that to get their dog licensed here at the city.
Any questions at Finance?
I just want to ask, I sent over some information, I don't even remember where I sent it to, about the poo prints, about the DNA thing. I don't know if anybody at the city has looked into it or thought about maybe.
I read through it. That's about as far as I got.
Okay.
It was expensive. If you'd like me to pursue more of that, I can.
I think it's something I'd be interested in pursuing. How could we wrap that up into licensing fees? The, the cost of setting it up? I mean, it's, you know, it's pretty prevalent, the amount of waste that's not picked up by some pet owners.
Okay.
I'd just be curious to know.
So you pick up the poop and then you do the DNA testing and it tells you who's the dog it is?
Yep. And then if, once you figure it out, then you charge the offender, the price for the testing and a fine.
Hmm. It might be a good time to pursue that then, Cindy, since our fee schedule comes before you at the end of June.
Well, what the heck.
I mean, it, it works really well.
First of all, well, the other problem is just getting people to, to buy the licenses for their dogs. People don't. I bet there's a huge percentage of the dogs in this town are not tagged. And so how do we, so what do we, we're not really doing anything about that either.
I think it's part of the process that I want to look into is how do we? Because, I mean, it, it definitely lessens the charm of living in this town and, you know, you hear the complaints all the time. It's extremely prevalent, the complaints that are out there. And I know probably a good 150 people that will stand right behind me and say, we need to, we need to figure something out.
Something, yeah.
You know, and not everybody wants to put a camera on their front door to find offenders and stuff like that. But, you know, it's, it's unfortunately prevalent.
We'll put the, we'll put the poop bags down the alleys and, down our alley. And it's amazing, even though they're, they're attached to people's homes, that people still don't pick up.
Still don't pick up.
Or they, or they pick up the poop, put it in the bag, and then don't put it in a trash can to keep it where they find it.
I just really want to actively look at, you know, solution-based things rather than just complain about it. I mean, I really want to try to sort this one out.
Okay. Sounds interesting.
Unless there's anything else.
Any other questions?
I'll pursue that. Thank you. Not urgently.
Yolanda Say. Regarding the, the dog situation, is there, there's still law that you can't walk down Front Street with your dog, correct?
Yep.
And I, I mean, on a daily, I see dogs wa, who, is the code enforcement, the one that?
Yep.
Enforces that?
And police and sheriff.
Okay. Because I see it on a daily and it's, there's, it's visitors and it's island residents. And we want to keep Avalon beautiful and if, and just take a walk down Sumner, Clarissa, behind the church, that whole walkway, I mean, it's, it's really, really bad. And I, and I think that, I know you might think that it's not something that's important, but I think to keep our islands clean and presentable to visitors and residents, that it is something that we do need to look into. I mean, we don't have a dog park. We don't offer that for our visitors or our residents. But we do have owners that, I mean, I see dogs early in the morning just out, walking themselves, so there's no owners picking up behind them. And we just ordered a ring for our property on Clarissa because there's offenders that come in and, and use a restroom in between the houses on the flower pot. So I, I think it's something that the city needs to look into and hopefully we can work together as a community to help.
I will look into the DNA testing.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. On a lighter note, we'll talk some, some recreation. Holiday decorations. End of the season, we'll, we'll come down tomorrow. We've got teams in place, both Public Works and Community Services take down the tree and some of the decorations we've got out. New Year's Eve, New Year's Day, we kicked off the year with our swim and plunge. We had a slight group in the morning for the swim. We just had six swimmers, but was pleasantly surprised when I came to the beach at 11:15 for the 11:30 plunge and it was packed. Looked like, looked like a summer day down there. Took a quick poll of who was planning on swimming and a lot of hands went up. We probably had 75 swimmers that jumped in and I think a few of us in this room got in as well. Val being one and nothing to anybody else, but it was a great way to kick off, kick off the new year. Youth basketball kicked off this past weekend with our evaluations. We're taking a few more signups this week with our first game starting this week, so you'd need to get in. You can do this, this week to kind of make the last couple spots. Next week, we kick off the Catalina Breakers program, eight-week program, followed by the Tumbling and Ninja program the following week. Other programs we've got coming up, Primetime is going to do a blow art and lunch with Jason Green. We're going to try a leapfrog event on Leap Day, Year Day, February 29th down Front Street. So be looking for some information on that.
That's for primetimers?
This is, we're gonna, come one, come all. General community, general community and visitors. And then our second year of the Kite Festival on March 24th. We, with the popularity of pickleball at the skate park, last week we added a second court. We're starting to see, you know, four on a court with two waiting, four waiting, six waiting, so we put a second court into play. Both courts can be struck down, they're temporary, and then go up as you're using, so we're not tying up the court when we're not, the skate park when we're not using it. And then lastly, did someone say July 4th?
Yeah.
With that quickly approaching, we are officially going to announce the theme, thanks to the council members that chimed in. Three top votes, we're all the same, and the theme this year will be Catalina by Land, Sea, or Air. So theme this year, we're working on a grand marshal and some other ideas for, you know, for the, for the day. So with that, any other questions?
We haven't done the grand marshal yet, though, right?
No.
Okay.
Open to some ideas. I think the mayor's given me some ideas, so open for my ideas on that as well.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is that for the departments today? City manager?
I just want to wish everybody a happy, healthy 2020.
Good.
All I have for you tonight.
And city attorney?
Nothing tonight.
Okay. Council members?
I don't have anything.
I took part in the primetime event last month at the Inn at Mount Aiden. They put that lunch together and that was really cool. And I guess it's the last time they're going to do lunch at the Inn at Mount Aiden for anybody, but no. It was a well-attended event. There's, what, 40 people there?
Wow.
Lot of fun, food was good. And pickleball, my wife likes pickleball a little bit, I'm afraid about breaking most of the bones in my body, but.
It's so, this court is so small, you pretty much just have to go like this, Ollie. You don't really have to run or anything.
We'll see.
Okay. You don't see me out there either. Okay. Mayor Procham?
I, just two things. One, I wanted to thank the Harbor Department for putting on the, sort of an annual gathering and remembrance for Tim Mitchell. I was very, very disappointed to have missed it this year, but through a tough situation, it brings people together and it helps to unify and helps to remember somebody who was really, two people who were really important in our community. So I wanted to thank you guys for that. And then also a shout out to Dan Hunky. We received a beautiful letter from a member of the community regarding the contributions that you've made to the community. And so it was a good opportunity for me to say thank you as well, because we do get lots of compliments about the programs we're offering in town and just the increase in services in general since you've come on board. So, thank you.
And I happened to attend the memorial for Tim Mitchell and it was very, very lovely. So, but that's, okay, let's go to oral communication. This is an opportunity for people in the community to speak on items that are not on the agenda. You will be limited to three minutes and no action will be taken. And I guess I should, okay, there she is, with your little machine.
It's back. The machine is back.
Yeah, I think we had the city attorney do it one day.
Turn it on. Okay. Paul Birchall, Avalon Library. Our new calendar is out. You can come pick it up. We've got quite a few things coming up this month. I will say the calligraphy program I talked about last time, I've had to reschedule till March because of the performers' availability. We're still doing it, but because I didn't have any performers coming in otherwise, I booked a gentleman named Ken Froley, who's going to do a performance of international folktales for children. That's going to be on January 25th. Many thanks to the friends of the library for helping sponsor that. They've been very generous. Also, I believe ukulele classes are still going on Mondays, 4:00 to 5:15. Actually, Allison's out of town, so they may not be. I'll take that back. But we've got a lot of good programs coming up. Just very quickly, we're starting our toddler play and explore program Friday mornings at about 11:00. I put a lot of toys out and it's a chance for toddlers and their caregivers to come on in and play and bond. I'm going to start our series of Smarty Pants Storytime this Saturday, January 11th, 18th, 25th at 11:00. We believe we've got a special guest appearance by Mayor Annie coming to do Storytime for us this Saturday. That's going to be kind of awesome. I'm very excited about that. We have our Make Mo librarians coming back on the 24th. They're going to do two programs. They're going to do a computerized robot thing to do spy craft, little kids, little bits spy school. And then we're going to do a little geology program with turning rocks into magnetic magnets so they can do little magnet tricks with it. That's coming up. I'm trying to jumpstart our book club. We're going to be reading Becoming by Michelle Obama. I've got like 20 copies of it. Come on down, come on down and pick up a copy of the book. And our history talk with Chuck Liddell, that's always Tuesday, third Tuesday of the month. Last month, it was really, really cool. We talked about a lot of old historical stuff here. It's a lovely chance to talk about Avalon history, Avalon culture, Avalon gossip. Fabulous. Before I wrap up, I briefly wanted to address Councilman Cassidy's, you were, we're asking about lighting last meeting. I believe we are installing lighting.
Yay.
Little lights, I think they were actually on the side of the building already. They just haven't been connected to the electricity yet. The electrician is coming out, I think on the 20th to finish that. Knock wood, it'll be up pretty soon. So we're working on that.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. And it's not my doing magic, it was, they were installed already there, they just had to. But thank you very much. Please come to your library. Lot of stuff going on.
And wanted to add that the census people were here on Saturday and basically Paul hosted them also, was kind enough to put something on.
They reached out to me the day before.
I know.
If I'd had more time, I would have really promoted it around the town, but I just put up a Facebook and we got a goodly number of people there. And more importantly, one of the people there then took the census facilitators in hand and then guided them around the town to search for other people, so I think they got some of the people they needed. And it was my pleasure to host the census people. That's something that other libraries around the county, they're all doing it. It was my privilege to be able to do it here.
Oh, great. Thank you so much.
And mayor, would you note what they said to you about internally, they dropped the ball of notifying because that was an important thing?
About the?
Letting us know that they were coming to town so we could have advertised it.
Oh, I know. And they said they somehow managed, but, but they're looking for about 60 people to do the census, which is a lot of people, and I think the salary is, wage is about $30 an hour. So it's an incredible opportunity. I threw, I passed out a lot of the little postcards. They wanted everybody to sign up by yesterday at 5:00 for those main jobs, but then there's also some cleanup people that will come, that they'll kind of use as well. So if people are still interested, they can still go online and apply. And I don't have the card with me, but it's outside in front of City Hall and maybe we could just put the address real quick on the, or the email on the city website or something in case anybody hears that. Oh, Paul's going to add to this, good.
We used our Chromebooks, we have 10 Chromebooks to really good skill. Every person who came in, they didn't have to say, oh, I'll just take this home and submit. They could just go online and submit right then and there. I want to say we have free computers available, so just come on in if you want to apply if they're still taking people for the jobs. Just come on in, we'll go to the website, apply.
Yeah, thank you. Yes, they're very helpful there at the library. Okay. Any other oral communication? Okay, consent calendar.
We have five items this evening on the consent calendar. We have minutes from the December 17, 2019 regular meeting of the city council. We have warrants for a total disbursement of $2,083,785.50, and that's between the period of December 7th and December 27th of 2019. There is an extra weekend there, so that's one of the reasons for the higher amount. And number three is to adopt a resolution declaring equipment listed in resolution as surplus property and to authorize the city manager to dispose of it properly by applying the city's surplus property procedure. We had 15 items listed in the resolution. Number four is to award a professional services contract for an on-call engineering for an amount not to exceed an annual cumulative total for all services of $500,000 to ESG Engineering Incorporated. And our current contract had expired on December 31st. Number five is to adopt an ordinance amending Title IX, Chapter 11, and 17 of the Avalon Municipal Code, affordable housing pertaining to inclusionary housing requirements. And we had the first reading and waived all further readings at the last city council meeting. This is the second.
I just have a couple of quick questions on item number three. I could just ask those of Bob real quick if you want me to. Are the three-quarters of the way down, the foam blocks, are those the foam blocks that were purchased for the race?
Yes.
For the downhill skate race?
Yes.
Okay. So second question then would be, once we declare this surplus equipment, then the city has the ability to go out and try to sell it or recycle or whatnot? So is it, is it possible that the foam blocks could be something that's advertised more locally? Because I know that there's some nonprofit organizations that might be interested in maybe.
We do do that.
Okay, I didn't know if you did or not.
Yes. We put it on public purchase and then we go out to local sources also and see if there's anybody that wants some of our equipment that stays on the island, you know, and foam blocks being part of that.
Okay, cool.
Did you have a use for those, Dan?
I think Dan wants to get rid of them.
No, I, I know they take up a lot of space, but.
So there were about 400, just over 400 of them. We own half of them and we're going to keep 100 of them just to have them on. We reached out to the company multiple times to try and get them to come back and reached out to Sector Skateboards. We got a lead that they might be interested in taking over the race. We reached out to, went into drink companies also, and we just couldn't get anybody to take that. You know, we've been working on it the last couple of years and just nobody to take that thing back over. So they're tying up quite a bit of space. So like I said, we're going to keep a quarter of them and then I can touch base with you. You've got some people you want us to reach out locally. We'll make sure that happens.
Yeah, perfect.
Cool. Cool.
So, with that then, I would make a motion to approve items 1 through 5 on the consent calendar.
Can I just ask a question about number five? For, and this would be probably a Bob Greenlaw or Michael Palmer question. On page 1, 2, 3, item C, it says, "Encourage the availability of dignified, safe, and affordable workforce housing within the city of Avalon by promoting development of decent living environments and removing unnecessary barriers." What are and how are those unnecessary barriers listed or how do we know that we're doing that?
Can you repeat where you saw that?
Yeah, it's not, it's not, 1, it's page 3 and it's the third paragraph down. Number C, letter C. And this is the third line.
C that's at the top of the page, Jenny?
Yeah.
The third paragraph.
Third paragraph, item C.
A, B, C.
Encourage the availability of dignified, safe.
So, most of those unnecessary barriers are identified in the general plan under the housing element and some of those other ones. And it's, this is just helping to streamline some of those in order to increase some of those opportunities.
Okay. I just didn't know what an example would be.
Yeah, so in the, in the housing element, thank you, Bob. In the housing element, under the 2030 general plan, one of the bullet points says, "Removing governmental and other constraints to housing development and promoting equal housing opportunities." And this, the whole purpose of this is to ensure that the local cities, specifically Avalon, have the tools and mechanisms necessary in order to ensure housing gets built, basically.
I mean, I get all that, but I guess what is an example of an unnecessary barrier that we would be eliminating? How do we know what those are? So, somebody, what would be an example? We go, "Oh, no, you don't have to do that because that's an unnecessary barrier. Why do we even have, wouldn't we always never have unnecessary barriers?" I guess is what I'm trying to say.
Well, no, I think under, under state law, there are certain requirements in terms of percentages of low-income housing that you have to do. And what we've done is we've adjusted ours, I think, a little bit. I think we've reduced it from 25 to 20%. And that, that will allow, will encourage more development of housing in the city. And part of encouraging the housing in the city, it's a barrier that we have because we're on an island and we want to, we've, so we've streamlined this to make it more understandable. We've altered the standards to make it more Avalon-specific. And that way, we're hoping that we'll have more inclusive housing and barriers that we're removing are the fact that we're on an island and our ordinance has been out of date for 15 years, so.
It just sounds.
So, some of those, some of those examples, if you're, if you're looking for an unnecessary barrier, the whole intent of this policy is to help better define legal regulations. So, unnecessary barriers might be legal ambiguities that prevent you from moving forward in a streamlined process. So, it could be impacting the permitting process. It could be looking at interpreting law. So, those are some examples of some of the unnecessary barriers.
Okay, thank you.
I'll second the motion to approve items number 1 through 5 on the consent calendar.
Moved and seconded. Any comments? Call for the vote. We don't have to raise our hands.
All eyes.
Hey, we're working again.
Thank you. Item number six.
Item number six is the adoption of your ordinance regarding the incorporation of the state standards for rebuilding codes with some Avalon adjustments. You've already had the first reading of this and you've waived the second reading. This is for the adoption, but the reason we're having it not a consent is because we are incorporating the state standards. And when you incorporate state standards in an, in an ordinance, the best policy is to have a public hearing. And so, we've noticed this for a public hearing. We, so the appropriate procedure would be to open the public hearing, hear any comments, close the public hearing, and then adopt the ordinance.
Okay. Public hearing is now open. Anybody have any comments? Hearing none. Public, public hearing is closed. Counsel?
I'll make a motion to approve, to adopt an ordinance, oh, wait a minute. What am I doing? I'm, a motion to approve to adopt an ordinance allowing the 2019 State of California Building Standard Codes and Local Amendments. Okay.
Do we have to read the?
No, you don't. You already read the ordinance memorandum. The entirety of the thing.
I second guessed whether I wanted to make that motion there for a second. Can you tell? Who was her?
Counsel member Olson was the second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. No comments. Call for the vote.
All eyes.
Thank you. Wait, what? Wait.
Oh, this is going to be exciting. Are we getting a presentation, Bob?
Yeah, just slightly. I'm ducking away from you.
No, that's okay. I don't have it here.
This doesn't seem to be working anyway. How'd you turn this on?
Oh, I can see it on the screen then.
So, moving on to item seven?
Yes.
Okay. So, Bob Greenlaw, Director of Public Works. This item considers providing direction to staff on a workforce housing proposal at the City Hall campus here. So, first, some background information for the public. During the planning period of development of the five-corner pedestrian project, it was recognized that the city-owned land adjacent to City Hall, that piece right there circled in red, along Tremont Street was not being utilized as highest and best use. Right now, we're currently parking our transit buses back there and we could find another location for those. And otherwise, it's a dirt parking lot and also drainage channel. And we're going to reconfigure that drainage channel with our five-way project, our five-corner project. Acknowledging that the city of Avalon has a very limited inventory of developed land, the Public Works Director was tasked with finding building site opportunities for housing. So, that's how this got started. So, Avalon's housing deficiency is not just the low, moderate income level, but to realize that all levels of workforce housing are in short supply. This problem's not unique to Avalon as much of California has similar concerns. Yet, what is unique to Avalon is due to the fact we're on an island, there's no opportunity to move out further to get affordable housing. So, this situation led to limited recruitment pools for several management positions that we have recruited in the recent past and as well as high turnover rates for some of our key leadership positions. And it's also recognized additionally, younger employees, especially with families, have a difficult time staying in Avalon due to the cost and lack of stable housing. So, additionally, it's important to note that the city has an array of contract services that, for a city employee, city contract employees, such as the city attorney, the sheriff, the wastewater treatment plant operations, and information technology functions that require transient or permanent housing for those positions. So, city staff proposed to investigate the feasibility of developing workforce housing for city employees and professional services contractors on the underutilized land identified adjacent to City Hall, that red circle there. The proposal will utilize on-call services of city's contracted engineering firm in coordination with efforts by city staff, develop a preliminary site plan and a pro forma financial plan to fund the capital improvements. A very preliminary review suggests that the site could yield at least 14 units for permanent employees and 70 units for transient contract employees. Parking is proposed to be incorporated within site design. A first review of the utilities reviews that all utilities are available for the entire frontage and can be ready for development during the five-corner utility modification. Some water allocations are existing with our Los Casitas units that the city owns, but a new allocation will be required. As the city already owns this land, there's inherent reduction in the overall capital costs necessary to develop the site. More importantly, the revenue stream to fund the ongoing debt service and maintenance costs is from existing sources that can be redirected. And those sources, right now, there's employees and contractors that already expend funds to occupy housing for private entities and those funds can be redirected that would fund the debt service for this. So, the property is zoned P, so public. And what that means, coming out of our general plan, the P designation is intended for areas vital to public services. Principal uses include schools, hospitals, parks, libraries, parking lots, and support housing. Okay, so it fits that. The site is approximately about 55 feet deep and 165 foot wide. And that's very preliminary, you know, it can be adjusted. The width is pretty well set because of the roadway and where City Hall is, but the length of it could be adjusted. Okay, so, move on to the second slide. Can we move? We just lost our slide. Hey, Alex. So, what we, we have $10,000 budgeted this year under project 205014 in our capital improvement plan and $50,000 next year. The $10,000 was for preliminary design, so that's, you know, your planning studies and $50,000 would be design. With that $10,000, this is what we think we can do between our on-call services and city staff. A site layout with alternatives, okay? And this would be just a real broad brush layout. It wouldn't be an in-depth, but it would give a couple of alternatives, kind of a, really a proof of concept of what would fit on there. We confirmed the magnitude of the water allocation, you know, with those number of units. Confirmed the utility service availability, so everything up front, we proved to you that there would be ample utility service available. We'd evaluate the workforce housing needs for city and contract workforce. We would evaluate the potential revenue streams to be able to fund that. We researched the potential funding sources and we developed preliminary cost, developed the project and the continuing operation maintenance. And that would be put into some type of funding mechanism over a period of 15 years or whatever. And we would suggest, you know, we'd pick some different funding mechanism in different years and show what that could do. Okay? But we anticipate that the revenue stream would pay for that debt service without any other city funds. There may be some seed money that could be paid back, but that would just be to get us going through the design. And then, once the construction started, that would be, you know, financed through some other mechanism. So, that's, that's what our proposal is. Questions? Entertained questions?
Counsel?
How many units do you think, are you kind of anticipating?
So, we, we talked about, I presented 14 permanent and seven transient. So, the initial concept has potential parking, maybe underneath at the front side. And the back would be like one-bedroom transient units. On top of that could be, say, 28 bedrooms, but they could be a mix of one to three-bedroom units. That would be, you know, in the range from the street level, three stories. And it can be 42 feet high per, per ordinances, so. So, that's, you know, it would be 14, 14 units, depends on the configuration of those.
Yeah.
But I'm saying 28 bedrooms of full-time employee and then seven transient. So, that's gives us, you know, that's that 21 units.
Now may not be the right time to, to say it, but would it have to require parking? I mean, could the units be built in a way that maybe we didn't have more cars in town?
Yes, and we could use that for further housing space.
Yeah.
But I just wanted to be able to answer that question that it was available if it was so desired and it was necessary for the project, that it could support its own parking without going out in the street and it could support its own storage. So, people need storage and those could be, that could be done in the front end of that right from the street level.
Perfect.
What are the development standards for P?
I would, I was expecting Amanda to be here today, so that's, but that would be, that's a great question that we would like to bring back with this. Okay?
I have questions and comments. I'm feeling like we don't have an overall plan on this house, on this whole thing of housing. We find that, you know, we talked about the East Whitley property and we're kind of moving forward with that, but then we have people that come forward and say they want to bring forward a proposal and we're not saying no because we're dead set that this is what we're going to do. I don't think we're dead set as saying if we develop those four units, that are we going to, do we want to make them condos? Or do we want to, you know, but, do we really want to put four or five more units on there? I don't think we know as a council what we want to do. I'm also concerned with, I look at that piece of property and, and to think that, well, we have this piece of property, so that's where we have to put this. I'm a little nervous that, I don't like if, that feeling of this is all we've got, so this is what we have to do. I just feel, I feel uncomfortable. I was talking to Denise, city manager, about the property where the, because we own those other two casitas. And if we went forward with looking at this, I would like you to also include all of that property because to make a rectangle, to me, isn't really pretty. I guess you can make a pretty rectangle, but, I mean, I would like us to explore that property there because it's pretty big. We also have the parking lot at Catalina Kid Ventures. I'm also concerned at some point, we're going to be asking ourselves the question, where are we going to put these electric charging stations? I don't think we have that plan of where we want to put that. So, I think, I almost think the council needs to have a meeting on housing just to really figure out what it is to provide a good, solid direction because I don't think we have that. I think we're kind of hit and miss. And I appreciate your enthusiasm and I know we need workforce housing. The other thing is talking about how to fund it, but I know that I mentioned it to Bob the other day. You know, perhaps, because I also recommended that we have that survey, which we did when, when Jenkins, city manager Jenkins was here, we had a survey done asking city employees what they wanted. We don't know, we haven't found that, right?
I have not.
Okay, so we're like, we're going back to the drawing board, which needs to be done as well because I think before we say, and I know it's all preliminary, that 14 for permanent and seven for transient, I don't know what our numbers are and what the real need is and what their income is and what they can afford as we're putting numbers together. I think we need that in the formula. I also could, would be interested in entertaining other private businesses, like you say, Chet, you could use employee housing. Well, perhaps there are other businesses that could say, hey, we could put some money in there for employee housing as well, which would reduce our costs. We would then have a land fee that it would, that they would have to pay something to have the land to build their little places on or whatever. So, I think, just think we need to have a plan. I don't think we have good direction.
I think is what you're asking though, is this direction to move forward to give a, to see what the feasibility would be.
To put a little bit of money into it, $10,000 and you would get a lot for that that would answer the question. And the ultimate end goal may not be workforce housing, but it could be some other type of housing there or it could be where there is some sharing of that, that somebody could have some buy-in of that. But really, what I'm doing is saying, here is an opportunity. This property is paid for. This property has utilities. It's flat. It is out of the floodplain as we go further on the Field of Dreams. Down towards Descanso and that direction toward the creek, that's in the floodplain. So, that's really, it's non-buildable for housing. So, then also in the area, there was a, some research done and there was some drawings that we did for that at the, behind Kid Ventures there too. And recently, we've been in discussion, we put an application in for our community center in that area. So, that was not to step on those proposals in that direction is this property can't be used for the community center. It's not the right shape.
But Bob, I appreciate your saying, but I'm talking about the property where the, where the sheriffs live, that casita there, that wasn't community service property, I don't believe. That wasn't rec property. And where that other one is that is staying vacant?
Yes.
There's a lot of land there as well.
And this proposal does take in that one casita right on the road.
It's on there.
Just the one casita, but not going, not going around.
Yeah, not going in the.
And if we, and if you could include that in it, that might be kind of nice as well.
And I've already researched that and I can bring that forward too, going in the opposite direction. And it didn't go along the frontage here, but it was along the opposite direction.
But I mean, it could, it could, it could scoot around instead of being just this square rectangular building.
Absolutely.
Could have a little more sex appeal to it, I would think.
Absolutely, and it's, and the vision here is when this gets, this is not just a box, this will be something that should be eye-catching, that, yeah, we don't build just boxes, you know? And, but we can do it out of modular components and get it built, you know, over town, get it shipped here. There's been another construction on the island that's happened that way. It's real cost-effective, and then we get those components and then we make it look good when we get over here and start adding some definition to the face and the roofs and, and make it look like something that really kind of trims out City Hall here. Really, we need to, we would need to put a building there that would do that, but, you know, so it would add to the City Hall complex instead of taking away from it, you know, and it would be an essential function of it. But it just, it looked financially really good for the numbers. It fits in that housing need that's not the low mod income that we were doing, working on. So really, you're working on two different housing component, components at the same time, and you were, were, at least were moving forward. That's, that's why I was trying to bring this forward to council, because I had been working on it for a while and said, hey, we at least need to get a discussion. Community may not want it, but, you know, at least we need to, to go and, and get some numbers, some better numbers.
Okay. Again, I think, I think we have homework we need to do and figure out where, what we want as a council, because I don't think we're there. But I mean, if y'all want to move forwards with this, we can. I'm just, I'm just, just a little bit nervous that, that even if it's only $10,000 and then, well, and the first question is water. I mean, I, don't we ask about water before we even pay $10,000? I mean, that seems pretty simple. There was going to be a question about transferring. We have a, we have a water, we're on the water list for five acre feet of water that's not community center.
That was up near Tremont, Tremont Polio Salon.
Okay, so then the question was, could we transfer that from there since we're not going to be doing anything there?
That would be part of our analysis with the water allocation. It's also important to note that the DWR, I mean, not the DWR, the, the grant funding was finalized for the, the water projects too. So that, that was finalized and the recommendation was finalized, and the $10 million in those projects is moving forward. Okay, so that's going to be a big piece of this, and do we wait for all of that to get built and then, so it's not start, finish, start, finish, it's parallel tracks and you get water being number one, housing being number two, and then your other infrastructure being number three. It's always what I say, is the, the most important needs as far as the Public Works Director telling, you know, advising the community, those things, you know, that's kind of the way that it looks like it all fits, you know?
No, I, I understand what you're saying, and I appreciate that, Bob. That's excellent.
How much of, of that cost is city staff time compared to stuff that you would go out and have somebody else do?
Um, I mean, with my skills and some of my staff, I mean, I think I'm going to be saving about $10,000 here, you know, because I'm really, you know, knowledgeable on this aspect of...
And we can do, and we'll do the surveying ourselves, amongst employees and that kind of thing.
It's really the architectural services, renderings of, you know, with the architect of the layout, the, with the site layout in CAD, that's really what the effort is for the consultant, and then some effort, you know, doing, for the most part, everything else is me and staff to get it done.
Right. And then at the same time, because, well, I guess it's prelimin, I mean, it may be a little too soon, but I'm concerned with things like, okay, is, is permanent employee housing? And then, but Bob explained this, and so you can explain that a little bit, so all of a sudden, the person either retires or is fired, and what do we do? So if you would like to address that in kind of preliminarily, like you've discussed with me?
Well, I mean, there could be a time period that, that they would reside still at the resident, you know, and that's all part of the agreements as they enter into that housing. And it could be, you know, six months a year at that point, and then if they're not going to be a further employee, then, then, you know, as long as, I think they're, at least I think it'd be fair if there'd be a comfortable time, that convenient for them to find other housing, okay? And that's not quick here in Avalon, but what is that? That is some number that we can grab and, and work at so that we're not at the point where we're not focusing on what the need is that we're trying to accomplish here, is that's workforce housing for city employees or city contract employees.
Right, right. Okay, because as we know, there's someone in the room that knows it's not comfortable when all of a sudden they're retired and you end up with a bad mark on your name instead of saying, look, we've, we've provided you housing all these years and now you don't have it. You know, it's, it's not a, it's not comfortable. So I want to avoid as much of that as possible.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, I think, not different than any other place, you know, it's just that we need to be reasonable, you know?
Right, right.
This will be workforce housing, and any lease will have a stipulation that it's only usable while you're employed by the city.
I, I understand.
And no relocation cost because we're not using our housing authority.
Right, right, okay.
All right.
Go for it.
Okay. Do we need to vote on it, or just say, provide direction? Go for it, as Ollie says.
I would prefer a motion.
The staff proceed with the $10,000 plan.
I'll second.
Move and second. Call for the vote.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, can I ask for clarification, or would you like to also direct staff to move forward with a survey of employee housing?
Oh, definitely.
Definitely.
And the contractors, the sanitation people, and the wastewater treatment plant. Sheriffs, I don't know, maybe, I don't know if any of the sheriffs really want to, that aren't already living here, really want to live here. We might want to throw one their way just to see, I don't know. And the, what are, and all the paramedics, do any of the paramedics like live here in regular housing?
They have housing over here in...
They just do, I guess Rambo has his own place, but, but most of them, okay, all righty. So whoever would be included in that one? Okay, so it's five to seven or something like that, and I don't believe...
Five to six.
Oh, five to six.
Two to six.
Oh, my God. Okay, this is like twice we've done like this. This is pretty awesome. So we want to thank you all for coming, and I just want to get all the council, get their attorney-client communication confidential thing.
Thank you, Scott. Good night.
Planning Commissioner's got it.
Good night, Tony.
That's why I don't tweet.
Okay. Good night. Meeting adjourned.
I'm getting overpaid now.